Bill's ready, so we're ready. So we're gonna call a meeting to order and wanna welcome everybody. We'll start with the prayer and then the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day you've given us to enjoy. And as we celebrate Labor Day, I'm just thankful for the workers of this community. And above all, I'm thankful for the industry that employs these, our citizens. Also, I appreciate the work that the CIC does in America to keep our industry strong. Pray for wisdom for everybody to make the right decision through Christ, I pray amen.
Amen.
Let's do it. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Har.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Eglin.
Here.
Clifford.
Here.
And Charlie Martin.
Okay. You have before you the regular council meeting minutes. August the 22nd. Looking over for your approval. Any additions, corrections? Motion approved. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clifford.
Yes.
Bassett.
Upstate.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the bills that need to be approved. Any questions?
Do we have additional trash or something, or why are we paying a separate landfill fee for PD trash?
That was all out to the landfill.
From the PD?
Yes. Yeah. Cleaned up their garages back there on the Saturday. One of our guys pulled the landfill on that Monday. Making sure to pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Vehicle.
Har.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Board of Commissions, I see nothing was submitted. Anybody have anything to report? Okay, council committee reports, no minutes were submitted. Any committee meet? Okay.
Personnel, Matt, we interviewed two of our AAs. I'm not sure, are you? Charlie's not here, he's Personnel Chair, but I don't think you sent a report in. We did interview two possible attorney solicitors for the village. Both were great candidates. Both had, you know, a lot of good aspects from them. I think they were gonna talk a little bit more. I don't know what council's opinion is. If you wanna have, I know they've done it different ways over the years, and like I said, if we wanted a second interview, maybe with more council present, because it was just me, you know, and Charlie, kind of thing. So they both had great attributes. I think they bring a lot to that seat right there. I'd like to have Charlie expand on it more, since he was, you know, put the minutes in there. We talked afterwards, and I don't remember, you know, we had thrown off everybody's ideas and who we thought might be better, you know, the resume and from the talk and interviews.
It can wait another couple of weeks. I don't think we need to make a motion.
Right. I don't know what council thought it is, maybe having a second interview, since we had two of them apply, and, you know. You know Troy knows both of them. I talked to Troy about it, and like I said, they both have good attributes about what they contribute to the table. Is what, would you guys?
Do you guys both have the same favorite, or do you guys both have the same favorite?
It's unanimous. Me, I, I was just there, just observed.
Well, it's also, your position higher as the current mayor, so.
It is, and not personnel, and I will.
I believe it's, it's your decision.
Okay. So I was there, that's, that's one of the reasons.
I was, and I'm not on personnel, I just came to observe and listen and.
I'm, uh, we can talk to Charlie, see if he wants, I don't know if the whole council needs to have a sit-down with him.
I don't know, it's an important role in council, we specify that.
Or you guys could make your selection, and having come to council.
The person that chooses, yeah.
True.
Because I would recommend, and then I would have that person come.
I mean, having come before you recommend.
Okay.
Just, you know, case anybody wants to bounce in question.
How do you know it's a heat?
Oh, I don't, I don't. I'm just with the mail, throwing this peg. I keep saying it all the time.
So anyway, yeah, we're not, as long as we get somebody on board, there it is, September, we're good.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
We didn't have a meeting, but I did a drive around tonight. There's a house on Beet Street that's sitting well.
They've got it jacked up, treated lumber, like they're getting ready to pour the cement. I noticed that today.
Something's happened.
We're still meeting tomorrow.
Yes, 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 yes.
So, yeah, the houses.
I just, I had somebody tell me I like giving them this bad press, and I just want to give them a little good press.
But I saw the jacks, it's up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We'll talk about it tomorrow, nuisance part.
Super.
Any other reports? Okay. Solicitor personnel. Cory.
Volleyball courts in the park are finally completed. Little seed and straw around those sand courts this fall, when the weather is a little cooler out. Maple Lane has been completed, everything except yard restorations, that'll be done later this fall as well. The Wellfield project is, is completed. You can see there on this report where it shows what the negative numbers are, that's what we were under budget, so we came in under budget on both of them. We are still waiting for the final pay-asks from Orman and Bryant Excavating. Water tower has been painted. They're hoping to start the water lines, all the underground electrical, the next month. Completion for that is the end of December of this year. We did sell the zero term, went for a lot more than I thought it would go with the issue that I had. And then we had our bid opening for the pool, and we can have discussion on that as well.
I was gonna ask for an executive session about possible litigation on that.
Sure. Met today with Choice One for the East Cornelia Rock Street water main replacement. Went over that and changed a few different things. Added a valve, a couple of different valves to be replaced, and relocation of a hydrant, so we're still hoping to go up to bid the week of September 11. This'll probably be a spring project for, for this as well. So I gotta.
Any questions for our legislators?
Is AEP still gonna run power after the oil bill? Is that already done?
AEP?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all done.
How's the Chicago having a tear down coming? That was gonna be a do a month ago.
Yeah, last time I talked to Mike, the guy was behind schedule. I don't remember who it is. He's the same guy that tore down the house on Rock Main Street, crushing the park.
Okay, any other questions?
Ramsey?
On the pool, on the pool discussion, we're gonna have an executive session?
We'll do that deal.
Unless you wanna go now, can wait.
Can wait.
Okay. No other questions for our administrator? Okay. One of our guests here is Brian Roth from Choice Plus Therapy. Step up there, please, and just kinda, your partner was here two weeks ago, right?
Yeah, he's been here, I think, a couple times.
Okay.
It's just Choice Physical Therapy, not like the one you're having do the road construction. I don't do that. I'm more comfortable if you had questions for me versus just fire at, I mean, I got to talk to Ron and show me a couple of his concerns, and I think we'll actually make the hospital stronger. And I believe that, I mean, we meet, I meet personally with Tasha, Kara, and Dr. Ingram, almost on a quarterly basis, you know, just to talk, and that's part of DeKalb. And I also meet with the director of the therapy, Tony Stumpf. And, you know, we bounce patients back and forth, we bounce ideas back and forth. I, we almost need the hospital to be strong. We want them to be strong. That's gonna be the huge referral base, and I hope that that continues to remain strong. But I think, you know, we're really not competing in the same market. We wanna come out and do a lot of ergonomics, you know, hit the plants and get in the plants and help them be more efficient by having a workforce that feels better and all that. And also the new nursing home that you're building, you know, that when those people leave the nursing home, they have to have therapy somewhere. So we want it to be smooth, and quite often, they don't, they're still not quite strong enough. We actually go to their home to transition, and there's not too many therapy places. In fact, we're like the only ones I know that will actually go to their home and get them strong enough to then come to the outpatient facility. So I actually hope to work closely with the hospital. You know, I've seen Dr. Grohhouse's patients for years, poorly in neurology, you know, so I, I see it being a good alliance. Increase awareness, I think the research has shown that, you know, that we could help improve the awareness in the, the community about therapy and how we can help them. I don't think we're gonna be battling the same market, and I'm open to meet with them anytime to help how they can be better, stronger, how they, we can be stronger through them. We deal a lot with the local chiropractors. I'm Brian Roth, and everybody thought I was Brunt Ross. Brunt, I don't know how old he is, but they're like, he's bald like you, and that was years ago. And we treated, we cooked, we treated a lot of patients together, and a little bit with Bagley. I look forward to joining forces with, with, you know, Hagerty over at the hospital. We really, I have my manual therapy degree, so we talk the same language. And that's another thing that makes us a little unique, is that, you know, I'm actually treating one of DeKalb Hospital's employees, the therapy. You know, we share, they have strengths that I don't have. I have strengths that they don't have. And I, I'm the first to say I don't know everything, and I will defer when it need be. So I think that we can play great together, and we can bounce people back and forth, because I know that their workforce, I think, I went in there a couple of weeks ago just to check them out and see who they were, and they have like five or six therapists. And I guarantee three, four of them know something that I don't know, and they might do dry needling, I don't wanna stick a needle in somebody, so that's who I refer to. You know, we get a lot of clients that need x-rays, MRIs. I don't want it to go to Fort Wayne. I want it to stay here and send it to the locals, you know, as well as I want them to know us and know, like, they can just pick up a phone and talk to, you know, myself or Andy, you know, as well as we've employed two, you know, local guys, you know, that are gonna be, you know, working there also, you know. So that's kind of where we stand. We're not from Fort Wayne, don't wanna send, we'd like to bring stuff from Fort Wayne. I actually had a couple farmer groups, Yoders from Newville, Maldini's and all that, that would actually rather come to Hicksville than even come all the way to Auburn. So I think, because right now I'm seeing your, your people who live here in Hicksville but work at SDI, Nucor. I'm seeing them at my clinic. I would like to bring them back, you know, and I think that that's something that we can definitely do, you know. I think that we can help bring some of those, you are seeing Choice, but now we're in Hicksville too. So I, I think it's a win-win. I think, and, you know, and Ron and I were talking, is this a bad timing? I think it's a perfect timing, you know? If they're struggling, we're just getting going, why can we not both become strong or at least help each other? So that's, that's how I see it, and that's how I wanna play, because if they're strong, I think we're gonna be strong and vice versa. Is there any questions I can?
So you think you'll actually complement each other rather than compete?
Yeah. Plus, as you can see, I'm gonna help your local food business up here too. You know, we, you know, we talk about two bands all the time, and you guys have great Mexican pizza, and, you know, the Chinese restaurant I heard is very good. I have not ate there yet, though. But, you know, we wanna, we wanna help improve Hicksville, as well as the two young gentlemen from this area also wanna improve it. So I think that will definitely play fair. Like you said, you started out with a prayer, and I, we need more of that, you know, and I think we need to, you know, you're not gonna hear us slander the hospital, you're not gonna hear us slander, you know, hopefully, you know, we're gonna build up where they need to be built up, you know? It'll be fun finding out their strengths, finding out each of the employees. I don't know, you probably don't remember Vicki Knitschian that used to be at the hospital, she's not there anymore. You know, I knew what her skills were, and so even from Auburn, some of the, you know, I think they had aquatic therapy at one time. We don't have aquatic therapy, and there's a lot of patients that'll benefit from that. So if there's something that they do really well, we wanna send the patients that'll benefit there, you know? So I'll tell you what, it's, it's almost, I'm the chairman of the deacon at our church, the more we give away, we, we can't give away more than we receive, but it seems like the more we, we keep giving away, we're blessed with more. And I, and we found that, we've been in business for 13 months now, and the more people that refer to the Kairos, go back to your family doc, the more we're getting back. And I think it's the same principle, you know, you live according to his rules and what, what he's provided for us, and, you know, everyone, everyone benefits. That's kinda how, obviously, I'm the fielder, the groupie, so Andy, the financial guy, you know, the businessman, so I'm glad I was able to come here and kinda show you how I think that we can blend and improve on, on things. Any other questions, right? Anything that you'd like to hear more about?
Anybody have more questions?
Yeah, 'cause I don't think the hospital is doing ergonomics, you know, going out to the industry and meeting the people where they're at, you know? I think you start seeing those people that might live in Edgerton, you know, now they're gonna do therapy here, whether it's at us or the hospital, I don't care. You know, I'll probably say you need to see Grohhouse, and wherever he refers and he refers. You know, the hot, the school, what a, what a school that is. You know, I don't know if they've got athletic training, or I don't know who's doing the therapy there, you know? So these are great things that I think, there's all these holes, how I see it, that need to be, that I'd love to meet with the hospital, saying, what are you guys doing? Here's a hole we can fill, here's a hole we can help you fill, you know, you know, you know, here's, here's another served area. So that's, I guess, kinda how I see it, how we kinda roll, and I think how we have been blessed in, in just 13 months, you know?
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks for coming. Any other?
Thank you.
Solicitors' report, Troy.
First thing I have is Resolution 2023-19, third and final reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Fines County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2024.
Make motion move. Second. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Har.
Yes.
Clifford.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
And Resolution 2023-20, a second reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with Choice Physical Therapy and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Har.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
I guess putting pressure on.
Eglin.
Yes.
Clifford.
Yes.
And third reading, a resolution 2023-20, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with Choice Physical Therapy and declaring an emergency.
So move. I'll second. Roll call.
Eglin.
Yes.
Clifford.
Upstate.
Har.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
And the only other thing I have is the executive session at the end.
Any questions for our solicitor?
Any updates on the industrial right? American Tower? Yeah.
Derek is still around?
Yes.
Show a little bit of an hour.
What was that? Any updates on industrial park?
The, the tower.
Yeah, we actually got an update from their attorney. Oh, sorry.
So our TV.
Just this early, so, okay, today was the first day of that, I'm sorry. It was Friday, but we just responded to her today. We got an update from the American Towers attorney, that they are reviewing it, they requested additional documents to review, so things are moving forward finally. So that's, that's all I have.
Awesome. Did you start a timeline with Mr. Keller?
No.
Any idea, no idea?
No, I would, I know that before he was saying 2024, I think, and that's what he's told the mayor and myself, but I think once we get this resolved, we can kinda lock that time in.
Okay.
But things are moving forward. We're, before, we were like hitting our heads against each other, so, good news. Yeah.
Question, I have a question. Are they still working with yours, and do we have the other firm, attorney's firm still working with the paperwork? Are they still all working?
Yes.
Okay, both of them?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, and then there's times like when I will have communication, I'm making sure that the mayor and Troy are in the loop on that communication CC or whatever.
I get it. Okay.
Department heads, police chief, the layer, police, fire chief, Bruce.
Everybody always wants some good news. Well, I got some for ya. I put Derek Cochran on schedule for the EMS. He got his license, and he's ready to run for the village.
Local boy.
That's right.
Local?
Derek?
Married the Helly girl.
Oh, okay. He's already a fireman. Yes. Okay, yeah, I know it, yeah. Okay.
So is he living as a part-time or full-time?
He's part-time.
Part-time.
Yeah. I don't think we could, of course, I didn't ask him, but I don't think we could compete with his salary base over in Pauling as a jailer. Yeah. Compared to our EMS, but.
He works second trick, so he can run days.
I've, I talked to him 15, 20 minutes, and he's ready to go, ready to help.
Evenings, weekends, kinda thing.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you.
Yeah. Basically, it's, it's to cover Bobby and, and Skip from midnight to eight in the morning. And those two guys right there, they do, they run that all week long. And they say they're burnt out, so, yeah, if one wants a whole week off of not running from that, that point, Derek said he picked it up when he got home from the hospital.
Good job, Bruce.
Does that mean all of your positions are filled now, right? That was the last position you had?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Was that your last position that needed filled?
Yes. On the pay, on the pay full-time, part-time, yes. Now we'll wait till first year, when we get the vote, yes, vote for the levy, then we'll go on and further look at other things. So right now, we've had to land a lot, but we're good. I mean, we're solid over there.
Okay.
Bruce, do you have a plan to work on the levy, get the people?
Yes. Yeah. My plan is gonna be, haven't really started, but I've been thinking about it, going around, taking all the EMTs, all the firemen, giving them a map, coordinate the villages, streets, and go door to door. And if nobody's home, you open the door and you shove that, that flyer in the door. So that's what we're gonna do, and they'll be ready to answer questions about this levy. So we're gonna have a couple meetings about it. So that's my plan, and I think they should have 100% backing of that. If they don't, they see the dark side of, of the failing, so.
So everybody's informed that 100% of this levy goes for EMT wages?
Yes. Yes.
There's a little confusion there, but 100% goes for the EMT wages.
Wages, yes. And right now, I haven't started that budget yet either, but I'll go full force here a little while, and I'm gonna do one with, because they're gonna pass it, but if they don't pass it, I'm, I got one without it, so.
So a couple questions on that, I guess. Is there a way to guarantee that that's going to be spent on EMT wages solely? Can you earmark that?
Solely wages?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can make that, because you got all, not just the actual hourly wage.
Well, I, I understand that it can be allocated specifically for that, but is there a way to tag that money within the budget that it can't be spent on anything other than wages?
Uh, Cheryl.
That's a, that's a Cheryl question, I believe. I mean, yeah, we can earmark it.
Yeah.
Just like we earmark, let's say, tires for the trucks, and we need something else, so we go over and borrow this one over here, you know, and wipe out our tire fund and pay for this fund over here, so, yeah. I'm hoping that with the, with that increase, we should be covered very well in the village, excellent. If not, we'll see what happens.
Cheryl, can you, when, when do you need budgets?
Yes, I can.
Do you have a deadline out to the department heads? Do you have a deadline out to the department heads?
No, 'cause that doesn't work with them.
You stand right here. When, when would you like to have the budgets?
This is, he's already working on his, I know the police are working on theirs, his is done.
I could refer you thinking?
Oh, sure, then.
Okay.
So now we're gonna need some call.
Section number 15, have you given a hard date?
No. Every time I do, they never pay attention to it, so.
Well, if it's publicly documented, publicly recorded.
I'm writing and then it's still.
They get zero if they don't have a.
No.
That's a week.
Date or late, deduct from there.
So September 15th, you think that's reasonable?
September 15?
Yep.
Oh, no.
That's two weeks.
Okay, Cheryl. Somebody's never, no, it's a week. I'll be, I'll be sitting over there in your, in your side chair over there asking questions then.
She's there?
Yeah, I can work on it. I mean, I'll, I'll see if I flop with it. 15. You want the, you want one with the vote or one without the vote?
Both.
Both? Okay.
Both of the two. So that way. Committee.
We're meeting tomorrow. We're meeting tomorrow.
Perfect.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow or Thursday, I wanted to.
Is it?
It's tomorrow, I remember tomorrow. Tomorrow. It's on my calendar.
It's on the board. Any other questions for Bruce? Okay, cheers, Bruce. Park director, Ray's here. Cheryl, fiscal officer report.
A short one this time, the fund status, which the, looks pretty good right now, because we got our second infusion of tech money. And the Augustine Kentucky question, or are there any questions?
On the police report, I see he's got some stats in there, so.
What is called, the cases.
I have just a quick question, I guess, in regards to Cheryl, modelated trail aside, the nature trail out on the Wellfield. Association would like to start basically making improvements, adding signage, planting trees, all that stuff. It's not really clear-cut as far as who's, all of that stuff, I guess, does anybody have any objections to making those improvements?
A lot of people are using this. I, I live, I can see them.
Yeah, I think it's been well-received, and there's honestly not a lot of infrastructure out there currently, and they need some signage and things like that, and the association's looking at.
And the association is looking at adding a, partnering with a local businessman, getting a porta john out there. And we're discussing also the possibility of getting a waste bin. Not sure if we would be able to get one through the village and have workers do a regular pickup with that. They're out by Haber Drive anyway. I don't know if that's possible, was going to bring that up tonight.
Talk about a smaller one?
Yeah, just not a big dumpster, like a smaller waste bin, like what you see at residential houses, um, something like that, just to be able to keep that place tidy out there. There's been a lot of local residents step up as far as wanting to maintain and mow and do all of that stuff. That's not, I don't think, any concern. It's just a matter of basically how do we keep it up?
Well, the question is, I mean, do you want somebody before something's done, like passing along, because obviously I'm sure planting trees, depending what they're planting and where they are, different things like that, is, but if they start doing something that's going to require a bunch of village future maintenance or, I don't know, pour a concrete pad for something, I assume somebody might want to know that so that...
Yeah.
You know, you're always a little weary when people are doing stuff with your land, necessarily, not that I don't trust them, but...
Yeah. Well, the goal, the goal with the Trail Association is basically the, the maintenance of the trail is done by the Trail Association. So, um, but I guess I just wanted to bring that up and make sure that there's no objections to planting trees and stuff out there, so.
I would just like to know whether, before they, before they go in, just where they're going to go in.
The goal would be within the 15 feet around, it's like along, right now, around the parking, that parking area, a couple trees around there, um, along K-Spear, that long stretch, just to kind of delineate a little bit more. And just, basically it would all right now be within that 15 feet. And obviously the, the goal is, you know, long-term to take that all on, but for now, that's kind of what we're doing.
Tell people what the name of the trail?
Just Hicksville, Hicksville Nature Trail is kind of the power, um, distinguishing it. There's been, once again, a lot of local businesses that have stepped up and willing to donate time and material and all of that to make this improved, this improvement for the village, so it's definitely been well received. And September 21st, the goal is to kind of have a informational walking tour, have live music out there, um, and, uh, some food and just kind of...
Like a ribbon cutting ceremony too or not?
I don't, I don't know that we're going to get that formal, but just anybody that has questions about it and kind of what the vision is for the, for the space, um, that's, that's the goal, so September 21st, I think from 11:30 to 1:30.
I know I had somebody ask about like the, the trail hours, like if you're, a lot of people are there after dusk. Or is it going to be like park rolls and, you know, park has its own set hours, but...
The goal was basically to mimic everything from the park, so dusk to dawn and, but, but so there's no confusion.
If I, if I may, I was informed that the, uh, the open house is going to be on Saturday, September 23rd.
23rd, I...
On a Thursday.
Thursday's a Thursday.
Now, it's Saturday.
10:30 to 13:00 is a good time.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
So... Yeah, 23rd, okay. But I guess, does anybody have any objections to those improvements?
I would just, personally, I would think they should all go through Cory. I think those where they're located at, I just want somebody in the way. I want him to have his blessing on them.
Communication's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, I mean, same thing like you said, you know, about having future maintenance stuff. I have stuff like that, happens all the time, you know, they have a good intent, they put stuff in, whether it's down a football field or at the school, and it becomes somebody else's problem in a matter of no time and I'm normally the one that gets stuck with it, so I don't want to add an extra work to our village employees. I understand you got a lot of people willing to do it and that's what we've had the same thing with softball and baseball leagues down there, saying, we're going to take care of all of it, all the mowing, the painting and all this stuff, and a month later it's, it changes. And so I just, I run everything through Cory.
There's one person already volunteered to mow it, take once a week or whatever, so that was a concern of yours, Cory, right?
But I read the, about the get-together you're going to have, and it said that how long it is, is a mile?
It's 1.8, I believe.
1.8, okay. But look, one of them wanted to go.
It's a mile.
There was a nose.
It was a mile, I was in, but no.
You can turn around halfway.
You hug the inside, it's 1.4.
Ah, okay. Any benches out there yet?
Not yet, that's the goal, but then that's...
There are some being built, I know that.
That's the plan with the informational, that's the plan with the informational meeting is basically to convey what the vision is, you know, the goal is to have things like the dog waste bins and just so there's not, you know, dog waste littering the trail, um, getting some trash cans that are permanent fixtures out there.
Sure.
That kind of stuff, you just kind of paint the vision. So, and then obviously long-term, you know, you said you don't want to do 1.8 or whatever the distance is. The goal would eventually, you know, be for, uh, there'd be connected trails through centers and it's just a matter of getting to that point, so.
So I know that Troyer, you can confirm Troyer's law that we contracted to take care of that, how much of that are they expected? And if, if the trail committee goes past that, is that an issue? Like, what, what those boundaries look like for both groups, for both parties involved in that land?
I think the trail was just 20, wasn't 20 feet, wasn't it?
It was 50 or 20.
Yeah. It was like 20 feet around the perimeter.
Because I know that they've got a bunch of seeds and I know that they, they plan on making it look good, so I honestly didn't know, like, do they have to say they, they're aware of their boundaries?
Yeah, everybody, everybody understands that.
Okay.
And then, once again, it's, I mean, that's why we were pretty clear about the one-year renewable lease with Troyers. And obviously it's something that the Trail Association will, it is, it has been well received, so if they, frankly, I'd like to see the whole thing turn into a nature, uh, like a nature trail preserve type thing, but obviously you got to get to, get to that point, so.
Five, six years from now?
How, do you want to put a timeline on it?
Yeah.
Everybody has this on their desk tonight. I need to know if you want to do anything about it or just let it go, because I have to send it in this state.
Might do anything about it, you mean?
Object, but you do a question here, you object, yeah. Otherwise it would just go through like a, like it has our blessings, unless somebody wants to object, it's a...
Right, roll. Is that all you have, Cheryl? Anybody have questions for a clerk? Okay.